I think we're still waiting for John Hanlon, but we'll go ahead and kind of get started here. I'll do a quick review. One is I'll call our work session to order. I'll do a quick review of tonight's city council meeting. It's pretty quick. And we have our consent agenda, which is our minutes from last week. And then we will have a conversation about a funding support request from the Sandy area Chamber of Commerce. There should be a memo that you've gotten in your email from Jordan a couple of weeks ago on that issue. So you should have some materials on that. Are there any questions on that before we talk about it tonight? Okay, great. Well, with that, then here at the work session, we're going to have a conversation on our board and commission appointments and in the process, and then we'll discuss transportation system development charges and capital funding and some opportunities we may have with the Gunderson Road deal that we have going on. So with that, why, Jordan, why don't you go ahead and get us kickstarted with our board and commission appointments?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and hand it off to Jeff, but really quick, this, this is a nice item to do on a night like tonight to talk about some key appointments that are coming up on our boards and commissions. A lot of vacancies coming up, and so it's a good chance for us to clarify with the council on the process for doing those interviews and filling those seats. And so Jeff wrote this memo and kind of laid out what positions, what seats are needed to be filled, and sort of what the past practice was, and what the council process should be moving forward. And so we wanted to talk about tonight. And then it's also a chance to kind of talk about the Arts Commission, because they also have some vacancies too. So it's another commission that we could talk a little bit about the process for moving forward with that board. So Jeff, go ahead and do the staff report. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jordan. Yeah, so as we're getting toward the end of the year now, there are a number of board and commission terms that will expire on December 31st. Of particular focus tonight, we have the Planning Commission that has three seats opening. We have the Parks and Trails Advisory Board that has three seats opening plus one existing vacancy for a total of four. And then the Arts Commission, which we can discuss in a moment, which will have a total of six vacancies when the new year begins. So the Planning Commission and Parks Board openings were advertised in the most recent city newsletter, and we'll do some social media advertising as well. We anticipate collecting applications throughout October. As you know, our practice is to hold interviews with applicants using a panel consisting of the board chair and representatives from the council. Staff thinks that probably two council representatives are sufficient for advisory boards, but recent practice has involved using three council members for the Planning Commission interviews. Currently, we are looking at holding interviews in early to mid-November, so that Thanksgiving won't be a factor. And of course, the actual appointments are made by vote of the council in a public meeting. So the questions that staff are looking for direction on for the Planning Commission and Parks Board this evening are how many and which council members will participate on the Planning Commission interview panel? How many and which council members will participate on the Parks Board interview panel? And then what's the council's direction for how to proceed with the Arts Commission? And I know that Tyler has some thoughts on a potential approach for that. But I don't know if Tyler's here. Oh, there he is. Yeah.
I'm here.
Hi, Tyler.
Thank you, council. I hope everyone's doing well this evening. So thanks, Jeff, for kind of opening up the Arts Commission conversation. And I think that one of the ideas that I have or that staff has at this point in time is taking a sort of strategic pause, for lack of a better phrase, at this current point in time and reevaluating the Arts Commission, perhaps at the January council retreat where we typically do goal setting. You know, we have three open positions currently. As Jeff mentioned, we're going to have three more that open up at the end of this calendar year. We've heard some discussion with various members of the council and the commission as well about whether or not there should be more of a residency requirement than there is now. And most recently, we committed to funding and creating an arts master plan, given some of the challenges that we experienced during the Growing Together mural process and not having necessarily a clear path forward at this point in time. I think it might be a good opportunity to take a couple of month pause, reevaluate in January. And then, you know, if there are changes on the structure of the commission, we can make that, make those changes at a January council meeting and then start the recruitment process and really, you know, hit the ground running with the creation of that master plan with the new commission members on board. Part of the problem that I see if we start recruiting currently is that three of those seats or two of the seats that are currently vacant have expiration dates of December 31st. So if we do recruit now, we're going to be putting them on a very short timeline and then having to either reappoint or re-interview for those same positions. So it might just be wise to sort of, I'm in a meeting, buddy. It might just be wise to take a break and reevaluate in January.
Thank you, Tyler and Jeff.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Did you want to keep adding, Tyler? Or was that a quick exit? Or are you good?
That was a quick exit, but I think I summed everything up. I could ramble on if you'd like.
You're good. I've made those quick exits myself. Couple of things, there was a reference from Jeff on having three counselors do interviews of Planning Commission before. I was probably the problem with that. I reminded him that, remember, we had myself, Counselor Exner and Counselor Pete Sold conduct interviews on for Planning Commission here this last time. So I don't know how much, I don't think we put a lot of thought into that, other than we had three people raise their hands and we jumped in. And then the other, the others, we've only had two counselors involved in those processes, usually with staff and then the chair of that current committee. With arts, the only thing I would add with all the vacancies is, you know, COVID and a couple of different issues, wildfires and a bunch of things have affected our Economic Development Committee. But I really liked the process, the way that was going on and how we did that as a council, where we, we started with an ad hoc committee that really discussed some of the outcomes and the things that we wanted out of the Economic Development Committee, which then led into, you know, going out and recruiting members and then giving them a task list of things and a vision that we wanted. You know, maybe there might be an opportunity to do a little bit more of that work with the Arts Commission, with a new council installed in January and with the ability to actually do some visioning and having some opportunity with some vacancies there. If you look at the names of the people on the Arts Commission as well, all great people, but we do have a member who's running for the council right now, so that could obviously affect a position on that. And then, you know, the couple that are left, I understand is I don't believe either one of those are actual residents of the community of Sandy. Now, outstanding people and thank you so much for stepping forward and helping out. But that residency has been a bit of an issue with that commission. So that should be something that's kind of noted as we, as we think about those positions. With that, I saw Counselor Pete Sold's hand up and then Counselor Exner. So we'll start with Jeremy and then go to Carl.
Yeah, one of the things I noticed is, well, first off, on the Planning Commission, since it is the Planning Commission and it has such that big authoritative process in that aspect, what they decide on, I do like to have the three council positions. Part of that, I think it worked out well. And having that going forward, I think one of the question I had when going through this, I don't know if anyone thought of this, is what happens going forward, maybe this time around or in the future, is by having the chair member, which is great, what happens if they're also applying because their term is up? And so, you know, right now, you don't have that on the Planning Commission, but you could, right? They're elected by the people of the Planning Commission on that, right? And so Jerry's not on there, but you know, next time around, Jerry could possibly be on that, right? Or same thing with Parks or Arts or, you know, Library or anybody else. So what would we do in that case? Is, in, any ideas there, Tyler? Do we pick another member or of the, of the committee? Or, I mean, I guess it's up to the council to pick who's on the interview committee, so.
I think, you know, at least for the Arts Commission, if the chair is absent, the vice chair has stepped in. And so I can see that being the same process for the interview structure. Now, in the off chance that both the chair and the vice chair are both up for reappointment, maybe it's just a vote of that commission as who the other person stepping in is or another council member or staff member, even if you wanted to have the staff liaison sit in on that. That would also be an option.
Yeah, and I don't know if Kathleen is still the chair of the Parks or not. She was for a long time, so.
She's not currently.
Okay. Okay, so anyways, that was just one of the questions that I know we can work around as a council. We can pick anybody we want for any time.
No, I would just offer, I would concur with Tyler. I didn't, I didn't want to get into the weeds of some of this stuff, but I, but I agree with you. That, that will be an issue perhaps next year. I think the general idea is it's like us, you know, the most senior person that, you know, can, can do that without, obviously, you know, you can't have the person who's interviewing be on the panel. So in that case, yeah, I think, you know, the, the commission or board would probably put someone forward and, you know, if the council for some reason, you know, doesn't want that person to participate, that's your part, that's your prerogative, but I think that would probably be the default situation.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Counselor Exner, then Smallwood, then Schultz.
Yeah.
And Lee.
I agree a lot of what Jeremy said, so I'm not going to repeat a bunch. I think consistency would be important. So if you do three for the Planning Commission, you should consider doing three for the others to just make it consistent. Spread the wealth around about council being able to be involved in making those interviews. I really appreciate Jeff and Tyler suggesting that we do a relatively private committee to evaluate the pros and cons of each individual, because to me, if you're doing everything in public, it's tough to me, because those folks are volunteering anyway and to talk about their good character and bad character in front of the cameras, not the best way of encouraging people to come and volunteer. So there's that. The Art Commission is kind of a special thing right now for me. It's a bit difficult to sit here and listen and not know that they're half gone. It's just kind of difficult for me. And leaving it without a thing to do for the next couple of months, I think is going to end up with a lot of slowdown. And they're going to be of those, there could be all three of the other remaining people removed as well if that's where the council goes to reduce the amount of line for the people that are going to be involved in the Art Commission. And if Linda does get elected, so that, that to me looks like a completely wiped clean. And the whole point of doing these varied terms is to make sure we don't end up with something like we're kind of talking about here. So I'm, I guess I'm a little concerned about having the possibility of clearing out the entire Art Commission and starting over again. It's a relatively new commission. It has a lot of growth concerns, getting up in speed and moving forward. A lot of things they have to invent and all that. So to me, I'm hoping that we could find a way that we might keep at least a few of these individuals. And finally, I think most everybody has seen this in the past. It's sometimes tough to be able to get people to volunteer enough to be able to fill all of our committees and commissions. And we're talking three relatively busy, impactful organizations that we're going to try to fill all at once. We're at least talking about, what's that, 12 people at least? And maybe even 15 or so. That's a lot of folks to be encouraging to join up. So I'm, I'm not real excited about having to maybe drag as many people in that we've had struggles with in the past with getting people to volunteer. So I guess I'm making a pitch for keeping as much of the organizations around as possible, so we have some experience. And I think that's it for the moment.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Counselor Smallwood. The one thing I would add to that, though, is, is my worry would be rushing in, you know, rushing to find new members to the committee, rushing to find a vision for that to run down. You know, I want to do it right rather than to just jump right into it. Counselor Smallwood?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that we do, if we're doing three for an interview process for one, then I agree with Counselor Exner that we, that should be just straight across the board. That way, we don't run into any issues down the road. And then my second suggestion was going to be, as far as the interview process, perhaps it would be something to consider that the board chair from another commission or advisory board sits in on the applicant, on the applicant for, you know, say, planning or whatnot. Since they've, you know, if they, if they're the chair, they've got an idea of kind of where the city's at, what the council goals are and whatnot, and that might be a good individual to put in that position. So.
Good idea. Thank, thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Schultz.
I have a question. We don't, so say, people are applying for their seats that have been on the board or commission. If we don't have anyone else running, do we have to appoint that person or can we just leave it vacant? How does that work?
I mean, it's, you know, at the end of the day, this is, these are the council's decisions. I mean, you don't have to fill a position if you choose not to.
Yeah, I have no plans to not fill one. I was just curious if there was any, like, legal, I guess, requirements there, but.
I think it's just the budget committee that you do.
That's why I thought that was a thing. Okay, thank you.
I, I would also say, can people hear me all right?
Yeah.
I would also say that, you know, to the extent you have willing members and there isn't, you know, a bigger issue or an overriding issue to not appoint somebody, and there is a lot of discretion there. I, I think you would, you would, you would have it such that you have, if it's seven members, if it's five, whatever it is, that you fill that out. But there certainly can be difficulties in terms of getting people. And if you're thinking about, you know, with respect to the Arts Commission, having a slightly different makeup, it's more reflective of actual city residents versus school district or library district, then that certainly would be a basis to say, hey, we might leave it with one less member. I think that's totally legitimate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lee.
Yes, I was wondering, I was trying to think back, why did we make the Arts Commission a commission instead of a board? And whether or not we want to talk about that at the retreat before we start recruiting. I certainly agree that we should have three council members for each set of interviews. I think that makes good sense. And somehow in the back of my mind, I thought we were talking about term limits for some of the boards. And so some of these people will be term limited out.
And that's why they're on there. I believe those are the ones, the peoples whose names are on there are individuals who are term limiting now, January 1 of 2021.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The list is not necessarily people who are term limited out. It's just, it's just the people whose current terms are about to end. So we do have.
Oh, right. I've got you. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's a, so there's a difference, not term limits, but terms.
Correct. There, there is, there is an existing policy that was issued a couple of years ago. And I, I think that this particular, I'd have to check this, but I think this particular provision only applies to advisory boards and not commissions. But anyway, it says that if there, if somebody has already served two terms and there's somebody else who wants to apply, then the council should, you know, appoint the new person.
Is that in rules or in, it's not in our charter?
It's not in the charter. It's not in the council rules. It's in an administrative policy that was issued by the city manager a couple of years ago.
By the city manager and not by the council.
Right.
I want to make that clear. That was not the council.
Yeah, I was thinking there were two park board members that are term limited, Susan Drew and Kathleen Walker.
But I don't believe there is a term limit on any of them. And one of the reasons why we made sure there wasn't was because we have a hard time getting anybody on there. And we have some great people that serve. And so you would be throwing out some of the best people maybe, and yet no one else to apply. So we, we had this discussion. So that surprises me, Jeff, that that was in there. Maybe it doesn't surprise me.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Exner.
Yeah, in regard to this kind of conversation, I believe there are some individuals on some of our committees that I think either because of attitude or because of just, I think it's important to revolve them off. I think there are going to be some people that may not be willing to walk away, but we're probably going to need to think about how we want that, those individuals on our committees. And so I think there's going to be some, for once in my mind, a conversation about what's the makeup of these committees and how they work together or don't work together? And how that response is going to be something we want to see in the city. So I think there is some of that. I really do concern myself about the need for getting people who are really good and desirable about desiring to be on the committee rather than forced to be on the committee or made feel bad. Because I think we've had done that a few times and those committee members, they don't show up. They struggle with making decisions. They aren't prepared. We really need to get people who are interested, who want to be there. Because I think these are all quality kinds of committees and commissions that we've established them for a particular purpose. And just a real quick note, we decided to make the Art Commission a commission because of the special kinds of activities that they're going to be doing. Money-making, donations, making decisions about some of those, how they're going to go about some of those things, where the committees are more of advisory to the council. And I know that the council still will make those decisions about the art commissions, but there's a fair amount of responsibility that we wanted to give the Art Commission that wasn't in the bodies of the other committees. So that's kind of how I remember it happening. And there's some other voices out there. I'm sure that they'll be speaking up.
All right, council. Well, I see us tasked with a couple of questions from staff. One is, is the process on how many counselors should be involved in the selection process? I'm hearing resoundly three counselors uniformly on all. Is that correct? Just kind of nods to the head or objections? Okay, great. The other, well, hold on. So that's one. What was the other? Well, the other is with this Arts Commission. Do we want to wait until January? And, and kind of do another look on what we want to do with that commission and what our strategy and kind of vision is for that commission as a whole? And, and then start recruiting positions that will also kind of give us some time to be thinking through some of these other board positions? Or do we want to just jump right into it? Counselor Smallwood, I see a hand up.
Well, we had a very lengthy conversation about this entire process. And we talked about this months ago in council for starters. You know, I guess, I guess my two cents is that if we're going to wait till January to fill that commission, then I want to be ready to go in January to fill that commission and not talk about it at the end of January and have it wait till March or whatever it may be. So, you know, it's an important commission. I, I'm, you know, I've voiced it before. I'm really not happy with how this whole thing has transpired at all. And I, so I definitely, I agree with Carl. I don't want to leave this commission just kind of floating in the wind. I think it's too important. So if we do wait, if the determination of the council is that we wait till January, then I'd like to be ready to go in January.
Okay, Counselor Hanlon?
Yeah, I, I think it, my perspective is you've got a good chance that you're going to have new counselors joining the team in January. And just like any of those transition, it takes a little bit of time for onboarding folks. I think the committee or the commission could use a little bit of time to kind of cool off. I think that was a pretty heated community debate. I don't think I'm in any rush to reappoint people. At this point, I'm obviously going to be gone in January as well, too. So I, I mean, I think it would be good to onboard new counselors, but probably not have an expectation you're going to be able to resolve that in your first or second meeting in January.
Counselor Pete Sold, I saw a hand up.
Yeah, I think that, given the timing with the appointing of some other boards, you know, this is going to be several meetings here in November, which we have holidays. And then December, which we have holidays, and usually a lot of meetings do get cut in December anyways, that, you know, we could start the process, the recruiting process, I think, to then maybe have the appointment at the beginning of January. But we've gone through the process for that, just knowing all the, you know, many years of what happens with city council and everything else, that November, December, you know, with other family commitments and things like that, sometimes we only have one meeting in that process. And usually, we have other things going on too. So, but I think the recruitment process probably could happen and go through and then have that maybe appointed in, in the first part of, because there is that onboarding that takes quite a while as well. But that can also be part of the first meeting in January per se.
Counselor Exner, I saw a hand up, and now I'll go to you, Counselor Lee.
Yeah, I, I think that the Art Commission's already kind of half figured out that they're not going to meet much between now and the first of the year anyway. I think that the shock of all the things happening and they're pretty much, pretty much, that was me, right?
No, it was me. I just, there, there are no commission members. I don't think they're going to meet.
Yeah, right. I don't think there's going to be anything happen between now. But I do am concerned about this wiping the slate clean. Because if Linda does get a job with the council, she's gone. And then the other two, the two council are outside the city boundary specific, but still within the boundary that we said was important. I would like to have that kind of conversation so that those who are left over have some sort of confidence that they're not just being thrown out because of the political activity that happened this last couple of months. It's already kind of shaky. People are already wondering, you know, am I out of here anyway? And I think it's, we need to serve to give them some sort of stability, what little there is. So I would be in favor of having that conversation with council, at least about the Art Commission, whether or not you're going to keep them within the city boundaries or not. So that kind of conversation before the end of the year.
Thank you. Counselor Lee.
Yes, to me, it seems like the very most important commission or board that we need to deal with is the Planning Commission. They have the biggest responsibility and, and meet more often. So if we could make them a priority over the rest of the year, that would be fantastic.
I, I guess that's where I'm at. I mean, everyone on here knows the priorities that we have and all the huge tasks that our staff is having to tackle on our behaves, on our community's behaves. And I'm looking at commissions that I would place an importance, priority importance above the Arts Commission, just in the, on the commissions. I mean, I guess I'm a little reluctant to hear council wanting to push staff on a really tight and fast timeline, knowing everything else going on in our community right now for our Arts Commission. I apologize. I, I'd like to hold off until January and to Counselor Lee's points. Maybe to Counselor Pete Sold's point, begin advertising the positions, but not, not really holding our, you know, holding staff's feet to the fire on a tight timeline and everything going on and entering the holidays.
Yeah, no, I guess that's kind of what I was saying. Maybe I didn't say it clear enough. I just want to have all of our ducks in a row so that we're ready to go in January and not start the process in January, and then we're looking at that February, March. So, yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with that.
Okay.
So the question about in the city boundary or out, that's, that does have a fair amount of influence about where we're going to go in terms of recruiting and that kind of thing after. And I'm for doing it after the first of the year, too, with the Art Commission. And I agree that the planning is the number one. But I think there still needs to be some sort of direction about, are we going to go outside or stay inside?
Agreed. Okay, did we get your questions answered? Was I, I feel like I'm forgetting one of your questions, Jeff.
The other thing was, would the council like to decide now who would like to serve on those panels?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we can, we can go through it. Planning, we don't have a liaison. Last time was myself, Carl and Jeremy. The reasons for that was I was really excited, still am about planning. And Counselors Pete Sold and Exner had council experience on the Planning Commission. There are other counselors that are wanting to step up into a role.
Mayor, I'd be willing to slide this time because of my involvement last time and allow somebody else to take that place. The Planning Commission.
Counselor Lee, it looks like you'd like to.
Yes, if we're not going, if we're not going to have our regular three, that's an area that I have an interest and a background in.
Great. Anybody else like to, Counselor Pete? Anybody else like to Counselor Pete Sold, would you like to stick it out?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if, if there's other people want to get involved in that by all means, but I don't mind doing that again.
Okay. No, I'll do it again. That's okay. Okay.
Great.
All right. And then Parks and Trails, Counselor Smallwood, since you're liaison, would you like to stay involved in that one?
Sure.
Okay. And then I saw Counselor Exner with a hand up. Yep. Okay. Any other counselors?
Oh, come on.
Come on. Be one more.
John?
Right.
I'll start working on it in February, maybe later in January.
Don't be a lame duck. Come on.
All right. Well, I'll do, I'll do it. I'll do it. If it's, if it's a virtual meeting, I'll do it. And then why don't we hold off on, on arts until we figure that one out? That work? Okay. All right. Great. Moving on, transportation system development charges, capital funding discussion. Jordan, you want to kick us off?
Yep. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this item is really an early work session item that we wanted to just have a conversation with you about and get, you know, sort of your preliminary direction on how much we should bring back to you in terms of increasing our transportation SDCs. And another idea in terms of recouping costs for some of the, one of the, the projects that we recently added to our improvement plan. So I think it was in June, the city council approved adding the Gunderson Road and 211 intersection improvements to the Transportation CIP. And then also approved the addition of Gunnar Olson Road, which was another, I think, $1.8 million to the Transportation CIP. So what we, what we're looking for tonight is talking with the council about if, if we should move forward with increasing our SDCs to account for those new projects that have been added to the CIP. And then also the idea of creating a lack of a better technical term, but a district or an area of benefit for that travel basin that would benefit from Gunderson Road and the 211 project to create, you know, additional charge or surcharge for that travel basin that then would go towards reimbursing all or at least a portion of that project costs. But that idea does take some work in terms of engaging with our traffic engineer and getting some third party assistance and coming up with that appropriate travel basin and what percentage of that project makes sense to, to recoup by a surcharge. And then on the other side of the coin, if we were to increase our transportation SDCs citywide to recover those costs, how much of those costs would be recoverable because of the project? The projects benefit on a citywide basis as opposed to that localized area of benefit. So currently, I'm going to give you the, the picture of what we're talking about in terms of numbers. Our current transportation SDC, so when someone is building, say, a new home and they're charged for connecting to our utilities, they pay a transportation SDC for, for transportation infrastructure and it's $3,829 per single family dwelling unit. And I believe that the trip cost is $241.31. So adding just Olson Road to that fee, the increase to the single family fee would just be $19.42. Now, if we were adding Gunderson and Highway 211 to the SDC fee, the increase would be $95.19 to the single family residential fee. And then $6 to the vehicle trip fee. So again, these are numbers of, you know, $4,000 we're adding. We would add, you know, close to $100 for the Gunderson Road 211. And again, that's 100% of the cost of those projects being added to the SDC fee. And then back to the idea of creating a travel basin for a surcharge. Like I said, we would need to do more analysis on that. So really looking for the council's direction, if that's something that the council would be interested in, the city pursuing and running those numbers. We had talked about this idea a little bit, I think, when we added these projects to the CIP. But it's something that we can, can go, can get going pretty relatively quickly with engaging our traffic engineer and consultants to kind of come up with those numbers that we can bring back to the council. It's kind of a, I mean, we have to wait to see what that boundary would be, but we're probably talking about at least a couple hundred homes potential, probably more depending on that, again, that size of that travel base and then probably would include areas that are even, you know, not within our urban growth boundary yet. So we're talking about a long term, sort of as that area develops, they would pay this fee to pay, you know, reimburse and pay into that, that transportation infrastructure. As far as bringing back an increase to the SDCs, we were looking sort of for the council's direction night, tonight, if that's something that you'd want us to bring back in the next month or so. The increase to add Olson Road at least to the SDC fee to start recovering or start paying those costs and going into our SDC fund. And then we would also, at the same time, at the end of the year, be indexing our SDCs, something that we haven't done for a couple of years, but we with that recent code change in June, we were going to start doing small increases to our SDCs to keep up with inflation. So using the E and R cost index, I think of the construction cost index for the Seattle region is the, the cost index that we're going to be using. So kind of technical wonky stuff when we start talking about SDCs. I, so I'm trying to keep it as basic as possible and kind of start the conversation. Mike is here and also David can kind of help with the, kind of the legal questions about how these things may work. And we've been talking with him too about, you know, just the, the process of setting up something like a travel basin surcharge. But there's also the timing involved with increasing SDCs where you have to give ample notice before you enact it and things like that. But like I said, tonight, we really just wanted to start this conversation and get your direction on if the council is interested in, in adding those projects to our SDCs. And if there's interest in creating, or at least having the city do the work to bring you the option of creating this, you know, surcharge area in terms of recouping costs for the Gunderson Road and 211 project. So yeah, any questions or Mike, do you have anything you can add or David have anything to add to that wonky overview of SDCs?
Yeah, I think it's just important to point out that if we, you know, we, we would get the money back if we did it statewide. Add them to the SDC calculation, get that back citywide. It would take a long time. Surcharge, we might, you know, not get back depending, all of it back depending on the urban growth boundary goes. But you would, you would probably come back more quickly than the, you know, the small increment in the SDC citywide.
Yeah, what, thank you. One of the other things I would say is that, like maybe two things. One is I think that we could look at doing a little bit of both. So that is to say that there would be this, this surcharge or area of benefit for a percentage. And then there could be for, you know, a citywide fee, you know, a portion that wasn't, you know, allocated to the zone of benefit. That's one thing that we want to look at if the council were interested in that, that option. And then the second one is just as Jordan said, you know, some of the details is making sure that, you know, legally speaking, we feel good about having something like a, a zone of benefit in this SDC context, because oftentimes those are done, SDCs anyway, are, are on a city, generally a citywide or systemwide basis. So that's something that we, our office would want to just take a look at and drill down on a little bit more.
Thank you, David. And then Counselor Pete Sold's excited to go here. Counselor Pete Sold?
No, I just wanted to bring up a question, a statement from history past back in the Bluff Estates neighborhood. I forget which phase, six, seven, 20, whatever it was. Has they expanded the sewer pump station? I believe that's what it was. You can correct me, Mike or David on this, but we had a basin of an SDC type, it sounded like that, of an area that was only good for 20 years. And after that 20 years, you know, we would collect a portion of that even outside of the city limits that hadn't been extended or maybe urban growth very that, or was it, could have been the road. I can't remember if it was the road or the sewer. It's something similar to that over in Bluff Estates. I remember having to develop their quite anxious. And I think it was the homes down there by the park that was being built because he had sold the property. And there was going to be an additional additional permit cost for each house. Is that the area basin similar to that is what you're talking about there for the 211 Gunderson Road? Is that correct, David?
Somewhat, yes. It's the same idea. If I'm not mistaken, for the project you're talking about. And we, we also batted this around as well. And I wouldn't say it's, it's dead. It's just practically, there's, I think, a bit of a, a timing issue, but that's what would have been the advanced financing district or reimbursement district that was put in place that was parts of Jewelberry was done that way as well. The distinction there is that it, those are done, and certainly is the way the city's ordinance is written now. Where the improvement, the, the, the fee and how much each benefiting property would pay is determined once the improvement is built and you have final costs. And I think part of the goal here is that there, you've got a decent amount of development right now that's kind of in the queue. Whether it's Shaly Meadows or whether it's some other applications that are, that are coming forward. And with respect to at least, I think probably Olson as well, but I think the 211 improvements, you know, those, those aren't going to be done, you know, within the next six to 12 months. That's a, a longer term project. And so for the, for the, for the advanced financing district and some of the, the tools that were used, at least in some of the Sandy Bluff projects, that was imposed after the improvement was actually made. And that wouldn't be necessarily possible here.
And David, that was part of the settlement agreement with the developer of the city.
Yeah, for Jewelberry, that's right.
The city agreed to create an advanced financing reimbursement district to recover some of the developers' costs as part of the settlement.
Okay, yeah. I, thanks for being my memory on that. I think you're right there, Mike. I recall. And it affected, I know there were people outside of the city limits in that area that was, you know, considered of benefit that were quite had heartache about them as if we were taking money away from them specifically because they were going to have a hard time selling their property because of that. Now that's in the past and debatable on that topic, but but I think what you guys have proposed here would, both of those would benefit the city and maybe David has said, maybe there should be a portion of both of that piece of it would make sense as well. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Exner?
Not sure which one, maybe Mike on this. If we go to some sort of a transportation basin of some kind, and I'm wondering, would we ever get the money that we would be needing to pay off some of these SDC costs for these different roads? Rather than just using the entire city as a way to base the $19 and the $95 for the two different road systems. So would we ever get enough money to be able to cover that? If we went to the transportation basin?
Yeah, I think you'd get the money sooner. You wouldn't get all of it because, like, turn away out the basin would be bigger. You know, that, that improvement would benefit areas outside the current city limits and outside the current UGB. It's, it's likely that it would. So I think, you know, when you drew the line on the map, you know, it would include an area that you wouldn't be able to recover anything from until came into the UGB, the city and developed.
It would certainly be a longer payoff period if we limited it to a certain call a basin. But I can also see that it's, it would be more fair. So for example, in my mind, somebody whose property is down in Kelso Street someplace would probably not be feeling like it'd be very fair for him to pay for an SDC that covers Gunderson and vice versa, I guess. And so I can imagine that. But like Jeremy was saying, that there was a lot of call it complaints that they were being impacted unfairly with the old Jewelberry Road system. And I know that there's always that kind of stuff to be able, who are you going to put the money to and where are you going to split your lines at? And one on one side of the line would be very small amount of SDCs and one on the other side of the line, you might end up being influenced by, by those charges about where developments might show up at for time. I know in, as a Realtor, I get people telling me all the time that they prefer to be in Clackamas County because of the taxes. And then when we do look at a couple of houses on the same road, it taxes become a big issue about making an offer. One might be taxed a lot more than another because of the way we got there by the rules and laws. So I guess I see a little bit of both issues for the transportation basin or not. And that's all for me.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other Counselor questions or comments? Yeah, I, I think it's definitely something worth exploring, especially we have a lot of infrastructure needs in our community and definitely want to keep an eye towards growth, you know, paying for itself and paying for the infrastructure that's going in specifically in regards to residential growth especially. So with that, I think you've heard from council, we'd like to see the options that, that you're able to put in front of us.
Yeah, great. We'll, we'll bring something back. I mean, just to Counselor Exner's point, in unincorporated Clackamas County, yes, you're paying less taxes and fees to build a home, but there's certainly other places in Clackamas County that are much more expensive than Sandy in terms of our SDCs. And we've seen those comparisons before when it comes to like wastewater and water and transportation too. And so I didn't say this, but another point I wanted to bring up, we do have a transportation system plan that we're just kicking off the update of. So that's going to take about a year. But at the end of that process will be an update of our capital improvement plan, which will probably lead in then to relooking at our methodology and our SDC charges for our entire system. So the reason not to wait, as I think David mentioned, was there is a lot of projects in the pipeline. And to the mayor's point, you know, we have these projects already added to our capital, our existing capital improvement plan. And it seems prudent to start capturing those costs for growth to pay for itself now rather than, you know, waiting for the end of this plan to be updated. So thank you for the direction. We'll come back with, with more information and some options for you.
Thank you. And that said, just, you know, I hope counselors remember though, is that this is part of the housing affordability crisis that we impact, right? And so, you know, we should have in the back of our minds, every additional cost to a homeowner going in is that, you know, those are all going to be passed on. Every expense to a developer is always going to be passed on to, you know, to the resident. And so it becomes harder to get people into homes more affordably if we keep adding on fees. Now, we also at the same time need to balance that with our infrastructure and growth needs of a community, but just wanted to state that. With that, that's the perfect time to state it because it's 6:50. That gives us a 10 minute recess to our council meeting. So we'll see y'all here in 10 minutes at seven o'clock. Thank you. All right, everyone. I'll go ahead and call this council meeting to order. Jeff, do you want to put up the US flag for us? All right. Please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty. Welcome, everyone. Jeff, can you kick us off with calling the roll, please?
Okay, Counselor Pizza?
Here.
Counselor Smallwood?
Here.
Counselor Hamblin?
Here.
Counselor Lee?
Here.
Counselor Exner?
Here.
Counselor Schultz?
Here.
Mayor Pulliam?
Here. Well, welcome, everyone. A pretty light agenda this evening. Per usual, we'll start with a brief review of what we will be Per usual, we'll start with a brief review of what we will be going over tonight. We will go, start with any changes to the agenda, then we will move on to our public comment portion of the meeting. This is, will be the opportunity for any members of the public to address the council. We'll then go to our consent agenda, which includes our city council meeting, meeting minutes from September twenty first. And then under new business, we have a chamber of commerce funding support request discussion we'll be having. We'll move on to our report from the city manager, and then we'll conclude with our committee and council reports. With that, are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to public comment. Council welcomes your comments at this time. If you are participating online, please click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Additionally, please remember to state your name and address for the record. You'll be provided three minutes by our city recorder, Jeff Operati. Jeff, take it away.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The first hand I see is Allison. And you should be able to unmute yourself now. I believe she's already provided her address, but if you want to go ahead and state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, hello, council members and officials. My name is Allison Clu, and as Jeff said, I sent my address already. I don't have a question so much as a prepared statement, short, and a call to action that I would like on the record for Sandy. While the evacuations happened during the wildfires, we all saw the community putting aside politics to help one another. And I was so happy to see that recognized in the minutes from the previous meeting. And what I didn't see acknowledged, though, was the work that we have to do as a community in truly making each other safe. Many of us felt the increase in hostility and mistrust between local groups here in town, online, and even in real life. During the fires, this became its own kind of danger. The concerns about Antifa presence moving from Portland to rural areas led to the armed checkpoints and patrols looking for arsonists and looters, including here in our area. So yes, I want to acknowledge there was some evidence of arson and looting, but what concerns me was the quickness that it assumed a political dimension. And maybe this wasn't always in Sandy limits, but it was very close by and involved some Sandy residents and people were stopped and questioned if they didn't quote unquote, look right. And they looked suspicious. So photos were taken and posted online, and this led to multiple law enforcement agencies being overwhelmed with calls. As you know, during a time when they didn't have the resources to spare. So I want to be clear that I have no issue with community safety or preparedness. On the other hand, untrained, amped up and reportedly inebriated men driving around in poor visibility is not the best in gun safety, let alone community safety. More seriously, it is not community safety when people feel afraid of being questioned for driving down their own road for, again, not looking right, whatever that means. So the fires are no longer an immediate threat, but the mistrust and the paranoia persist in our town. And I believe there have already been multiple reports of harassment or concerning behavior made over the last couple of months, and there's likely going to be more as people are both identified and misidentified online as Antifa. And I just want to say that it's within the power of city officials to take a stand on this and also take preventative action to inoculate the town against the potential for tragic violence. It only takes one person misinterpreting a political agenda to assault or even kill someone they believe to be the enemy. And vigilantes are not bound by the same ethical obligations as those officials who are sworn to protect the entire community. But as officials, you are partially responsible for the environment where this rhetoric flourishes. So what can you do? First of all, reassure people that their rights are protected, free speech and bearing arms, but also that their families and homes should be safe regardless of what they look like or what flags they fly. Or bumper stickers around their cars facilitate dialogue, but also make a statement that community community defense should not be weaponized against the community itself. And vigilantism should not intimidate Sandy residents and visitors and then just get ignored when the smoke clears. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you for your time this evening, Allison. Appreciate it. Jeff?
Okay, Mayor. The next name I see is David. You should be able to unmute yourself now. And please state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes. Excuse me, welcome.
My name's David Brimes, one eight three nine zero Minig Avenue, Sandy, Oregon. So my call today is, I grew up in this, in this town. Unfortunately, my family had to leave when, you know, I was still a child. And I came back to this town when my kids were, when I was ready to have kids. And I love this place. We live in a very beautiful city, you know, lots of things to do in this town. Back at the beginning of, when Stan first took over as mayor, you know, we had the project, had the community center, and we bought the property there for the old junior high. Well, today I was down on the track walking with my daughter and it's just, it's in a complete disarray. You got roots growing through it. You've got the paint that's no longer, you can't even see the lines on it anymore. We're just, we're just completely abandoning it. And, you know, it's time we start doing little projects. I know we can't have the community center, but there's nothing that says that we can't keep up the grounds and do the little projects and recondition the track. I belong to multiple sports, baseball, football, all around town. We've got a perfectly good baseball field up there that we can convert back to a baseball field. You know, and most of the organizations, if we lease it to them, they do the maintenance on the, on the property itself. So there's no cost to the city. We got the football field that could be leased out to one of the, to Walton Valley and be used as a practice field. Maybe even one day bring a game there or something. But I mean, there's lots of things that we can do that would highlight our city and, and bring it back. I personally talked to Stan after a trip that I took to Redmond regarding the pump truck that they have down there, which is an amazing track. I mean, I spent three whole days down there with my son. I took my RV down there. We got an RV park and I was there every single day and my son and my daughter had a blast at that track. You know, we need things like that in Sandy for, that not only that the kids to go to, but the parents to take the kids to, you know, where we can go down and walk the track and the kids go play on their track. You know, or we go to the baseball game. We need something other than that's ran by the school district for us to do, you know, because when COVID first hit, every sport and everything was completely shut down because the school says, well, this is our property. Therefore, you can't practice on it. You can't be on it. So even before the masks and everything became a requirement, we locked our kids up in the house and said, well, sorry, tough luck, you know, and we need, we need something like that now. And now we got beautiful grounds that are just going to waste. They're, the grass is dying on them, the roots are taking over. You know, and I understand that, you know, because of the whole water treatment center, you know, money's a little tight. But there's organizations out there that will help pay for the upkeep. All we got to do is lease the grounds to them. And I know baseball, football, they all carry their own insurances for liability. So that's again, so then the city does not have to encounter to to let people use that property, you know. I mean, that, that's all I got. I'd love to get on some kind of, you know, committee or board that, you know, helps bring in this kind of money and bring in this kind of stuff to, to the city to make it so we can get people that will organize and fund and upkeep the properties where the city doesn't really have to, but the city can still use it and so can the residents.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, David, and thank you for continually calling in with different positive ideas of action that we can take as a council. I think a lot of us agree with a lot of what was said there. One thing that during our work session, we talked about is our boards and commissions and slots available. We do have some coming up on our Parks and Trail Advisory Board, which will be a big part of the dreaming and the implementation process of the Sandy Community Campus that you're talking about there. I think you'd be a great person to serve on there. And, you know, just like how you you identified a problem and rolled up your sleeves with the speed bumps, I think this is another opportunity. You definitely have people on council that I saw people nodding and excited with some of those ideas. So, thank you. Please apply at parks, David. Apply to parks. All right.
Okay, Mayor, just taking a look at the list.
Yep.
And I do not, oh, here is one. Okay, Mayor, we have Michael Horder or Mr. Horder, you should be able to unmute yourself now. Please state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Michael Horder, one eight seven one two Cloud Cap Avenue. I just want to, again, voice my compliments to whoever at the staff level is maintaining the Facebook Sandy site. I know last meeting, there was a lot of positive things said about that. And again, I wanted to say that seems to be a great way that we're getting our community involved and letting them know what's going on. With that being said, that spurred, spurred some thoughts in my head as far as, as different things we can do to try to get more community involvement. One of the things that I thought of was the idea of the council or staff looking at the possibility of getting a city of Sandy reader board, such as the community center, the fire station, various businesses throughout Sandy have electronic reader boards. You have lots of good information. I get a lot of information just driving by the community center, what's happening that you don't hear from other sources. You even have the ODOT sign west of Sandy that, you know, gets information out there. Such a valuable tool like that could be used to help get more of the community involved that don't have or are not on Facebook. And there's a lot of people that I think if we try to engage them more, would at least be part of the communication methods that we could use. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Horder. Appreciate your time tonight.
Okay, Mayor. Just taking another look, and I do not see any other raised hands.
All right, thank you. Moving forward on the agenda, we have the consent agenda. Unless there's any discussion, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from councillor Hamblin, a second from councillor Pizza to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by giving me a thumbs up or an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, or a thumbs down. Motion carries. Moving on to new business, Chamber of Commerce Funding Support Request. Lisa, this would be the time to join in on the conversation. I see you here on the panel. And Jeff or Jordan, do you want to kick us off?
Yep. Good evening, Mayor and council. So this item is a special item that came to us via a meeting we had with the chamber board. The mayor and I met with them probably a month or so ago about their financial condition and the impacts that the coronavirus has had on their ability to collect membership dues, but also their major, you know, their major fundraising events, which the, you know, their biggest you know, cash collections come from the Music Fair and Feast, which of course was, was canceled due to the coronavirus this past year. So we had a good conversation, a brainstorming session about ideas for how the city could be a partner with the chamber and some ideas for potential sources of funding, either for a one-time basis or ongoing. It's my understanding that there was a history in Sandy of financial support being provided up until a certain point. And they had other sources through the county and some other events that they were able to hold historically. But really, these days, their, their revenue comes from membership dues and the Music Fair and Feast, and then a few other small fundraising activities. So we did, we did have a couple of productive meetings with them. They sent the council a letter outlining their request and what the financial, financial request, you know, entails. And a little bit of, there was a document there that gave a little bit of the history in terms of their events and activities and the, the history of the partnership between the city and the chamber. So, you know, we committed to bringing this item in from the council for your consideration. One idea that was generated is because the impact to the chamber's revenues is directly attributed to the coronavirus measures to, you know, close, you know, mass gatherings and events that really, you know, took about half of their revenue. And then, you know, because of the impact, small businesses and their ability to contribute to an organization like the chamber, including the chamber itself, having, you know, not having any staff to collect membership dues, their membership due revenue, you know, basically fell off the cliff. So they're in a position now where, you know, they need financial assistance to say, you know, stay viable. They do provide a lot of benefit to the city of Sandy, which I'm sure you all know and have been a part of those events and activities and seeing the work they do for our business community. And so we, the mayor and I thought, bringing this to the council per their request and letter was the appropriate thing to do and having this conversation. But back to what the idea was, was looking at creating a grant program or giving a financial aid through the CARES Act funding to the chamber. Given that the city does have remaining funds to allocate per our coronavirus relief funds that were portioned out to the city of Sandy. We've spent, I think, a little over a hundred thousand in change of those funds. We have about a hundred and eighty-three thousand remaining. And so a conversation that we'd like to have with council that's related to this is developing other programs and grant, potentially other grant programs with those funds that we could go for a second round because those funds do need to be expended before the end of the calendar year. So that's where we got this idea of, you know, as, as an option for the council is giving the chamber a one-time grant as a, as a Corona relief grant. And then there's a second conversation that can happen, I think, with the budget process as we go into that is the ongoing partnership or relationship that the city and chamber could have that would include that financial piece if there was ongoing funding that could be found in the budget to provide continuously to the Chamber of Commerce. So Mayor Polian, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything in terms of our conversation, but Lisa Foster, the board president is in attendance tonight. She can also answer questions about the chamber's activities and the impact and any of the documentation that you received. But tonight, I guess we're looking or providing a recommendation to, you know, consider this request and dive a little bit more into the detail of options if the council chooses to provide financial support.
I'll kick us off, but Lisa, did you have some comments that you wanted to maybe provide counsel before we start off?
Sure. Thanks, Jordan. You did a great job presenting all the information that we gave you. So thank you for covering all that for us. So, you know, the reality for the chamber is that we have had, we haven't completely closed our doors. But we have, we basically just have no funding at all at this point. So we have laid off our director. We have kept our media and oh, email web person at about five hours a week so that we do have a presence in filling phone calls because we get a lot of phone calls asking about, you know, what level, you know, the, you know, what, what the climate is right now for the COVID. What's the, you know, what level are we at? What are we doing to help out with the COVID? Referrals, a lot of that sort of thing. So, you know, we are trying to keep a presence there, but you know, just the reality of the situation is, and me and Stan, Stan and I and Jordan had a conversation about this earlier, is that the chamber has been working on a year-to-year shoestring budget for a few years now. It's been anything weather, climate that shoots down our Music Fair and Feast. Last year was good. The year before, there was a huge rainstorm on our big night. So they, it was so bad that they had to actually shut the van down. It's, so that really can affect our bottom line and, and what kind of events and functions and that sort of thing that we can do. So it's been a kind of an ongoing struggle for a while. We have had, as Jordan mentioned, we have had, I've been with the chamber for several years now and kind of part of the board and off the board and back on. So I kind of had a lot of the history of what has kind of changed throughout the years, but we did have, you know, almost every chamber has funding through something, either the county or the city. And most we put on, I was just counting up, we put on about twenty. And most we put on, I was just counting up, we put on about twenty events that are weekly or monthly throughout the year. And most people think they're city events. We did a survey to see who knew what was a city event, who knew what was a a chamber event. In fact, today I was at Mount Moka and she goes, oh, you know what the city's doing for the trick-or-treat trail this year? And I said, well, actually, that's a chamber event. And yes, this is what we're doing. So, you know, so that's you know, that's, we're trying to kind of, you know, make sure that our name's getting out there, that we are hosting those events. But unless we do have some funding, I'm not quite sure what our option B is at this point.
Great. Thank you, Lisa, for that. Just to kind of get started here, you know, I I just want to say how important I think the the Chamber of Commerce is to our community here in Sandy and to different communities all throughout, you know, our state and our country. They play a very important part and in our sense of community and helping out our local small businesses and and for referrals and jobs and notoriety. Noticed all those kinds of things. Reading back on the memo, a couple of things I think really stands out, which is we had a Chamber organization that had a lot of revenue streams, or not a lot, but had several revenue streams at one time. Many of which have been cut back, leaving them really with membership and with the Music Fair and Feast. And as Lisa and Jordan both mentioned, you know, in July, the Music Fair and Feast gets weather elements on both sides, right? Sometimes it's rain, sometimes it's too hot. But they're always, and we've had conversations as a council, right, in the past about pathways we can partner with the Chamber to help alleviate some of those weather elements affecting their event. But regardless, we have a Chamber that needs more revenue streams, both in the short term and long term to be successful. And then we've talked about major issues in this community from Parks and Rec districts in the past, working with ODOT and and different sources to get a local bypass and what that would mean for our community. And to me, you can't really concentrate on those things without having a real strong and vibrant Chamber that's working with your main street, local businesses, near business sector in Oregon, working, you know, congruently with those other activities. Also, I mean, I think we all see this, right? The base of Mount Hood quickly growing with younger families coming into the area, people passing through for recreational opportunities, both in central Oregon and the Mount Hood recreational area. It gives our community a lot of opportunities to have a strong Chamber. So talking about supporting Chamber, I think there's also an opportunity to talk about what we would like the future of a Chamber to look like under such a partnership as well. But in the short term, I think in short-term relief with the COVID dollars, with the CARE Act, it makes a lot of sense. And then with the future council and in the budget process, really utilizing that as an opportunity to talk about what a partnership with the Chamber for a strong future would look like. It's a pretty good plan that Jordan and his team helped it together. So with that, I I think we're in a pretty strong place, both for the short term and the long term of this proposal. Open for a variety of discussion points on that, though. So without opening it up for discussion.
Can I just piggyback on that for just a second? One thing that people, I think a lot of people don't realize with the Music Fair and Feast, a lot of people just say, oh, it's just the beer gardens. But it's, it's really not. It's so much more than that. It's, we have actually transitioned it into almost a four-day event. So it opens up for a family day after the parade, which is they have, it's total family day with family music. We usually have food there that's provided. Most of it's free. We do the kids' face painting. They have the kid cook-off, the chili cook-off. They have the senior day. Just a whole lot of different events that it's kind of transitioned into. So it's really, it really is just such a fun family thing. And as far as the tourism, which is part of the grant that we used to have, was a I think that the Music Fair and Feast is such a popular event and people from the area that go to it for basically class reunions, a lot of people meet at the Music Fair and Feast. It brings a lot of tourism into the area. So I think it's one of probably the the bigger events that does bring tourism into the area.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to know what a summer without a Chamber of Commerce looks like, it's 2020, right? It's not very fun. I mean, we we all have the Music Fair and Feast or a lot of the different social functions that the Chamber puts on. And then civically, just the importance of a Chamber, we haven't talked about this, but obviously we have that trick-or-treat trail. But I, we're probably not going to have a candidate for them this year. Maybe we are. We haven't talked about it. But I only point that out to me, and that's something that the Chamber's done in the past, where if you have a strong, supported, financially stable Chamber, you know, that they play a very important function or community just in the ability for public officials to interact with constituents in in our local residents. Counselor Exner.
Yeah, I'm basically in favor of it. I haven't, we haven't talked about the dollars and that kind of stuff. But in terms of general thoughts, I I support, I agree about supporting the Chamber and making that kind of happen. I want to see the numbers a little bit here and see where we stand with that. But I know in the past, we've had some some involvement from the city in terms of, I think, staff has been on the Chamber Board in the past. And that has helped a lot in terms of coordination and understanding. But I think that has slipped off in the meantime. And so I guess I would, if we're going to support the Chamber, I'd like to kind of give us a chance to be able to have that conversation about what would be some things that would help the community and the city as well as the Chamber. And I think, I know that the Chamber is a business organization, which is separate from kind of the genesis and the needs that the city has, but certainly they ought to complement each other. And I'm certainly, I've been involved in in at least attending the Beer Garden, which is really more of a conversation than it is a Beer Garden. I like the music too. But so I'm I'm in favor of finding a way to support them. Maybe for Lisa, that she could, you could tell me, besides the dues, do you receive support from like the museum or any other income? I don't need to know all the numbers. Just
Yeah.
Like the others.
But we only have two sources of income. Other than, there is a small fee for the lunch and learns. There's a small fee for the, we do have the the big main the main event of the year. There's just a few small fees here and there, and that's basically to pay for the, you know, the food and where it's held at. But our memberships is basically the only source of income along with the Music Fair. And, you know, this year it was really hard to even send out billing during the COVID. And we just now opened that up to, we just sent a letter out to members to bill for memberships, but also you know, with a letter that's saying if you're having any issues paying your memberships, it's, it is, you know, well, we got it. We have a ninety-day grace period. So we just now started that, plus not having a director to do the accounting and billing made it difficult as well. But I agree totally, Carl, that we used to have a good, we used to have a good partnership with the city. And I think that, you know, going hand-in-hand with the city makes total sense to have a partnership and work together. So I, and we did have Dave Snyder on the board last year, the year before, and that worked out really, that worked out really great.
One thing one thing that was mentioned in the past is, is that, remember, the Chamber was receiving a portion of our hotel tax dollars that was then diverted away from the Chamber a couple of years back from the, to the Sandy Main Street program. But once the Sandy Main Street program evaporated, the funds were absorbed into our general fund budget. And so that is, as we go into our budget cycle and stuff, this next time, things that should be explored. I know that when I went to the Oregon Mayor's Conference, for example, in Medford, travel, Medford was very active in putting that on and and kind of shuttling people around and showing off their their local town. And that's all funded through local, you know, hotel tax, lodging, tax dollars and stuff. So that's something we can talk about in the, in our budget cycle. Obviously, this is more geared towards the CARE Act and and short-term relief based on the last year. And Counselor Lee and then Counselor Peetzel.
Yes, I'm a member of the Chamber myself, and I hope my dues are current, but I'll check. I think that in looking at the list of the twenty different things that you do, nobody else in the community is doing any of these. So without you, we're really at a loss. And I think we need to define a partnership and work with you closely so we can continue some of these good projects. So I would certainly support some support, especially through the CARES Act right now.
Thanks, Jan.
Do Counselor, Counselor Pete still?
Yeah, we've had a long history. I've, just for Lori's sake, I've been on it a long time, the City Council. It's an inside joke. Anyway. Yeah, boy. Anyways. Yeah, I just said for Lori's sake. Anyway, but when I first got on, I was also on the committee for the Tourism Committee and worked with the county as well about fourteen years ago. And we used to get money through tourism that then got re-diverted because the county had decided to do tourism and how they did that piece of it in visitor centers. And so you also were a visitor center too, and they redistributed that and made other areas up in Welch's or in Government Camp that as they found a different strategic way of handling visitor centers. So that was a source of income that was kind of not through the city, but through the county with the city in a partnership back then in that. And so both of those have changed in that aspect of it. I'm in support of this, especially given the COVID, given the grants we handed out before to our community members that we're applying for the CARES Act now in that not only with the Chamber, not only are we supporting the businesses and not all businesses are are Chamber members, I I get that too, but there is a large amount that are that aren't even in our main street area, but in our community as a whole, that the Chamber adds a huge benefit to that. And so I think it's a wise and appropriate place to to put that, especially given the opportunity to as well use that CARES Fund because December thirty-first is coming very fast. And that money does have to be spent knowing from some other CARES grant processes. So want to make sure that we can cross those Ts and dot those Is as well if we were to go forward with this. In that, I do like the idea, you know, when David was part of it, it seemed like, you know, in in other areas, we did with the museum, having someone from the city participate in their board too because of the huge investment that the city had put in place there too, was a great connection as well. So anyways. But yeah, I'm I'm for this and we need the Chamber in our community. It's an economic growth and we need to make sure we have a place to come out of this. One question I do have for you is how are dues, is that's your main source of income? How many Chamber members did you have before COVID? And two, what is, how are dues for a Chamber member calculated? You know, is it, you know, one person as a business, you know, different than, say, and I don't know if they are or not, but let's just pick Fred Meyer's or maybe, you know, XYZ company that size. Is there a difference in the Chamber membership or what that would be?
And that's a really good question, which for Chris, our director, because
He's raising her hand right now.
Oh, awesome. Okay, great. Go ahead, Chris.
Okay, let me go ahead and unmute her.
Yeah, Jeff, you can bring her into our panel.
Okay, Chris, can you hear us now?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we, it's been, I would, I think I want to say it's probably been about five, could be six years ago. When when I first took over as director, we looked at how we were charging dues. At that point, we were charging it based on employees for businesses. So if you were Fred Meyer and you had several employees, you were obviously in a way higher level. I always like to use Dolly's Pet Shop as my other example. You know, it was her, no employees, so it was one business person. And she was paying, you know, a different membership level. However, a big business versus a small business has different needs and different types of marketings, socializing, you know, referrals that they need from us. So we went and we created package memberships at that point and restructured those so that a member has a choice of how much they need from us. You know, if you need a marketing, you know, there's opportunities to have an ad on our website and our e-blast and that type of thing. And it went, it's went very well. We need to spread that word a little bit better about some of those packages because they really will. It combines, you know, your banner for Music Fair and Feast, your ad in a directory, your logo on our website, all of those things. And it's really a great benefit to them if they do that. So as an example, Dolly's did take the next one up, you know, even though she was small because she needed more from us. So that's where we've been with that for this, you know, last five years, I think it's been, that after that was put together.
And how many people do we have on members previous to COVID?
We had just under two hundred. And since COVID's happened, we have not dropped anybody. We, we've had a few that are saying, you know, I don't think we can make our dues. Like Lisa mentioned, we did send out a letter with those due renewals because we had a really hard time sending those out. Just knowing that those businesses didn't have the funds for that and how to handle that. So we did send out the letter and in that letter, like Lisa mentioned, we gave them ninety days. So we also said, if you need more than ninety days, please contact us and we will make a payment arrangement with you. You know, we'll work it out. And we are getting some of those people that are contacting us and and asking for that to happen as well.
And what was your base package to be a member? Packages, but what was your base?
So it does, it does increase three percent or or more each year, depending on it. I think currently we're at a hundred and seventy dollars for the base one per year. And we are relatively compared to most chambers on the, you know, the lower end of it. And then the partner one, which like I said, does include ad in the directory, a banner and your logo all over the place is about five hundred fifty-five dollars, I think, for the year. So, you know, it's a a bigger jump, but you get way more benefits.
Thank you.
With you, Chris. Counselor Exner.
Yeah, I guess it's time to talk about dollars now. And I noticed in the staff report, you're thinking about forty-five grand or so. What are you thinking about just a few months left of the year? What are you, what are you thinking? And who's?
Counselor Exner, there is an email that went out from Jordan to council that attached to it and all that leads to answer, but it did have some spreadsheets of their upcoming line item expenses for that, for the remainder of the year. But with that, Lisa, if you want to jump in.
Sure, I can, I can give you a real quick overview on that, Carl. So what that includes is just the ten minutes. And and I just want to make it real clear too, that this is not anything that has anything to do with any type of mismanagement of funds. In fact, it's a complete opposite.
Sure.
We have been so diligent on the budget and the funding that we, we went virtual this year, which actually I think was a good move. It really wasn't necessary to have a door front. It gives Chris more time to get around to businesses, interact with businesses where she was having to stay in the office and answer a lot of tourism questions and people stopping in for the best way to get to a hike or something. So this was freeing her time up. So we, we actually got rented office space. So we don't even pay an overhead for office space at this time. It is cramped and it's small, but we do have a donated office space. So we're down to the bare bones as, or as our monthly expenses basically is cell phone, a mini storage accountant, office supplies, mileage and taxes, web hosting, Chamber dues. We have Chamber dues as well. And then also, and then payroll. So we're, we're basically down to just the bare bones of a budget and payroll. So the payroll, we have about approximately at this time about fifty-six hundred dollars in the bank, which we have just been using for, we just paid out insurance, we just paid our part-time Shannon. And then also there was another thing we just paid for. But so that's kind of what we've got at this point. And everything else is, that's just getting us through August. So that's giving us a little, not even much of a cushion at all because for Music Fair and Feast typically what we have to do is put, you know, deposits down ahead of time. We have to do flyers, we have to do advertising. So this doesn't give us much of a budget, but it does give, I mean, of a cushion, it gives a little tiny bit of a cushion. And that's bringing Chris back full-time at forty hours and it's bringing Shannon back And that's bringing Chris back full-time at forty hours and it's bringing Shannon back at um ten hours.
Which, which I have found just in my dealings with the chamber is is their primary asset, right? The ability to organize and bring value to their members as well as everything being online right now of of great value.
Go ahead.
All right, uh, Counselor Pete's.
Yeah, and just looking at the um, the breakout for the um request of the forty-five thousand. Knowing that CARES funding is uh has to be spent um. Before December thirtieth or thirty-first there, uh, the layout of that was going till July or June thirtieth. Of twenty twenty. So uh, Jordan, this will be a question for you or David, I guess, in that. Um, would we be doing the grant as of now and then, you know, they spend it? As wished as well, but it's been spent from us by December thirtieth? Or because that they've submitted their expenses till July thirty, only CARES would uh pay for that previous to December thirtieth? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I I don't know if it's super clear in the criteria, David. Um, yeah, because I mean, if there's an impact from the coronavirus, right? It gives the council latitude to develop these grant programs to assist, you know, businesses with emergency funding and. Yeah, I guess the question is providing some advanced funding because of the lingering impacts of the coronavirus, right? Um, uh, is that eligible? And I, I don't know if I've seen anything to that level of detail specifically in the criteria for what the CERA funds are supposed to be spent for. Um, David, have you seen anything um along that line?
No, I I haven't. I I think that would be, you know, definitely worth a, you know, just an inquiry with the state, uh, you know, to see what. If there's something that's out there that's that's obvious on that point. My sense is that um, you know, it would be measured not unlike other. You know, other reimbursement requests and that is. Uh, you know, assuming it's justified, those standards that are there, uh, we know, was it incurred during that? That timeframe, uh, basically from the city's perspective, you know, by the end of the year. Um, and not, not measured necessarily by, okay, so then the, the money's given to an eligible organization. Um, you know, when are they making the expenditures? Uh, is that happening by the end of the year? I don't think that's necessary, but I think it would be worth. You know, having that uh, you know, question uh to the state just to be sure.
Okay.
Yeah, the grace, the way I look at it would be kind of like the other grants, you know. Um, we're giving you the grant to be able to do as you wish for that and that could be today or it could be put in the bank for, you know. Uh, to help you along to pay your bills. But it's a question, I know that everything else with the CARES Act. If you got CARES money, you had to spend it, but does that mean the person that you're paying it to had to spend it before that timeframe? Which, you know, that would seem uh difficult to prove, you know, like to do, but um, you know, we could.
Yeah, difficult to account for, especially because I mean, you know, once it's, I think that's the obligation of the. Of the, of the, of the, of the entity, the public entity that's getting the dollars. Is really just to make sure that um, you know, it's necessary in terms of this was a result of the coronavirus. It wasn't otherwise budgeted. Right? You didn't have this money um, you know, already accounted for or sitting in the city's budget somewhere. And that was one piece that, you know, there may be something there that we'd want to be a little bit conservative about, given. As I understand it, at least historically, there's been, you know, some very modest payment the city since maybe years. But that wouldn't, you know, nearly um account for, you know, what we're talking about here. So. I I don't think it, it, it runs that way, uh, Counselor Pete's, but I do think. You know, just to be sure, it would be, uh, I think, a pretty quick call, even just for some informal advice from. Uh, the folks at the state that are managing it.
Yeah, we had some, um, the state was giving out grants for doing fiber or internet connectivity around ten million dollars worth. And those agencies that wanted private or public, didn't matter, had to uh account for and be spent before December thirtieth. So. Only reason I ask.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments or we, uh, if everyone's feeling good about this, we can move forward with a motion uh to support the chamber with with these funds.
Yeah, I just, I'm totally in favor of doing that and I just also wanted to throw in there that I, I would love, there was a little note in the staff report about um doing another round of grants. I just want to voice strong support for that before the end of the year. So let's, if we can move forward with that too, that'd be great.
Great, thank you. Uh, Counselor Smallwood.
I was just gonna make a motion that we uh move forward and approve uh. Money for the chamber.
Can I, can I, can I help in before you make the approval? Just, I, I know you have a certain amount that you have to spend by the end of the year. Rather than turning money back in if you have, I can't imagine you having any leftover, but if there is. Definitely, we went with the minimum, minimum amount we could get by with. So if there's a question there and any left, we'll be gladly to. Have extra thrown in.
Oh, Lisa, Lisa must be from sales.
I love it. On the floor, I see Counselor Exner.
Yeah, one of the things that I didn't see in there, and that's the reason why I was asking what was the expenditures for. Was I know that uh, the chamber uses the museum a lot for things like the brochures and displays and. Quite frankly, they get a lot of questions about chamber kind of business and. Uh, if we do any increases, that would be something I'd be in favor of. Um, adding to, giving some of that to, or at least have you look at giving some of that to the museum to be able. Um, upgrade that to another, um, some places are short and so on.
Now, on that note though, it also goes the opposite direction where the, the, the visitor center is supposed to be in the museum now. We probably get most of the calls on the visitor um thing. That's one of the reasons. That we thought it was good to go virtual because we get so many people coming in on the tourism end of it and then Chris has to refer them. If she doesn't know the answer, then she has to refer them on to the museum. But we do do a, a, a good amount of building their phone calls as well.
Okay. Because I know that they do a lot of that themselves. I'm actually volunteering for the museum and I see a lot of. Uh, interactions that way. So that would be something to think about as well.
Awesome. Yeah, do I, uh, uh, Counselor Lee?
Yes, I'm wondering if we set the amount at forty-five thousand now, if we can come back at our meeting in two weeks after. We have found out more about how that money can be expended, possibly increasing it somewhat.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll, we'll look to staff for an update on how we can spend those, those funds after they conduct some more research. Great. Do I, do I have a second?
Sure, hold a second.
All right, thank you. I have a uh, a motion by Counselor Smallwood, a second by Counselor Exner. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up.
Aye.
Opposed, uh, nay or a thumbs down. Uh, motion carries. Thank you so much to both Lisa and Chris for your participation tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right, moving forward in our agenda, um, Jordan, uh, we'll take our report from the city manager, please.
Great, uh, just a couple of quick things. Um, speaking of those grants. Um, what we could do and and I think I'll have your nod of approvals. Um, develop some options for an additional round of, say, small business emergency grants, but also. Um, coronavirus relief grants to, uh, for residents who have been impacted by the coronavirus. I think there's a few cities out there that have done um grants that uh, you know, go directly to those that are in need and there's some. Um, you know, criteria obviously for documenting that impact, but that, those, those funds could go towards those. Um, uh, you know, families and individuals that. Need relief for paying, you know, rental assistance or utility bills, you know, um, essential, you know, needs. Um, so I, I think what we could do is come back to the council with um, you know, maybe a, a couple of different options. Um, because that, you know, even with the chamber grant, we'll have about a hundred and forty thousand dollars left. Um, that we can expand to the end of the, the calendar year. Our spending for city-related um, you know, items has, you know, is really minimal at this point. You know, we're, we're making sure to stock up on things like masks and protection equipment for, you know, our essential employees. Um, and, you know, we have our protection measures in place and it seems like we're always running out of hand sanitizer like everybody else. But uh, those expenses are pretty minimal um and basic compared to, you know, something that I think could do a lot of good by another round of of grants. Uh, so we'll work that up. Um, and then just a couple of quick reminders, uh, we have uh the Parks and Trails Master Plan Virtual Open House. So you had public comment tonight. About uh the community campus of property and the virtual open house is a, an amazing opportunity for uh members of the public to share those ideas. Um, and and participate in the future of that property, but some other properties uh in town that are slated for uh park development. Um, so that's live until October eighteenth, I believe. Um, and uh, I think so far we've had around fifty people participate. Um, with, with at least a hundred more that have um at least viewed uh the material there. And then um, just another reminder about the League of Oregon Cities uh annual conference, I believe is next week or the week. After the fourteenth, fifteenth, so it's coming up and I think Jeff had registered everybody um that wanted to go. If not, let him know. Um, virtual conferencing is, is actually, um, as much as we all love to be in Bend or somewhere else. Um, it's actually, you know, a lot of the stuff is on demand or it's very convenient. Of course, you're doing it from home again, but um. You know, it's also very affordable. So um, if you do have the chance to go, um, let us know. So uh, that's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Jordan. Appreciate it. Um, all right, we'll move forward to um counselor and committee reports. Uh, Counselor Schultz.
And no report tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Exner.
Yeah, a couple of things, uh, want to compliment. Uh, Jordan and Mike to be, being able to uh help with the idea of getting Representative Anna Williams uh. Up and informed about the Roswell Lake options and possibilities. Appreciate all the work that he did to get that up and going and. I think we're still some more coordination happening, but I understand there are going to be. Oh, a dozen or so people being able to walk her through that and give her a chance to see just how we are moving and. How important that is for her to support that, uh, should she win versus always that possibility. Uh, we'll leave that one alone for the moment. So I appreciate that. So thanks, Jordan and Mike for getting that done. In all the things that we've been doing, um, I'll have to get on my old horse here about uh urban forestry plan. This last ring of fires that have happened around it. The community and the county, I think it's really important that the city think about fireproofing some of our um. More dangerous places. You know, we've gone for decades without any major fires and. Suddenly, this past summer makes it pretty obvious that there's lots of things that could be potentially. Um, on fire, burning out more houses. And there are a lot of things that we have let go and I think it might be important to talk about. That as we move along and. I know there's too many master plans on the table as it is, but even when you start talking about burning down houses and the repercussions of that and. Uh, maybe doing a little bit of pre-work to make sure that we don't get into trouble if the next thing were to happen. Um, with all the drier weather and the things that are happening. You notice I didn't say the magic words that will get me in trouble about the warming climate. So let that one go. Let's see. Oh, I wanted to say, uh. I'm assuming that all the dirt work going on in the island in front of the Forest Service is us and we're doing something with uh vegetation there. Is that right, Jordan? Or is that?
Yes, yes. Yep, we're getting those irrigation lines in and and they're cleaning out all the dirt. And gonna start the process of getting background, you know, connectic in. And then these two will be coming up with a, a landscape plan to further enhance it, but. Yeah, it's look, it looks better already with just dirt.
I gotta say, it looks a little bit like gophers going on in there, but I appreciate the fighting back. There's probably. Uh, some kind of implements of destruction. So thank you for doing that. It's just been one of those. Things on my heart last year or so. So thank you for that. Hopefully it didn't cost as much as what the bid was to do a contractor in there. So I appreciate that. And um, I think that's it. Thanks.
I knew when I muted it that was gonna happen. Um, all right, Counselor Lee.
Um, just following up a little bit on fire, we were so lucky that Bull Run and. Our water resource protection areas were not harmed by the fires. Um, I currently work for the forty-five conservation districts around the state. And right now we're getting federal and state funds to apply to restore some of the damage that's. Been done to waterways and other areas around the state. So. We were really pretty lucky in our area not to have suffered through any of that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, Counselor Hamlin.
That's the new report tonight.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Smallwood.
I'm gonna get to my mute button. Uh, yeah, so just a reminder about the virtual uh Parks Master Plan. I hope everybody uh has the opportunity to participate in that. Um, and then just kind of a side note, um, I think we talked uh last meeting about uh ODOT. Um, dropping the. Safety corridor off of Highway twenty-six and we have now had five either fatal or critical. Uh, head-on collisions between Furwood and Langin Sand Road. So uh, that may be something that uh we need to get with. ODOT here in the near future and maybe have some discussions about, about moving forward with that.
Counselor, will you send me an email with your concerns there? I'll make sure to get the Ryan over there.
Yep, absolutely. So, and that's all I got.
Awesome, thank you. Um, Counselor Pete's.
Yeah, I want to thank Mike and whoever else. I think it was Metro that came out this Saturday. Um, for um, what, what, I forget what it's called, oil, liquid, recycling, hazardous waste, whatever it was. I didn't participate in it, but I heard from a lot of others that it was a very popular um event uh surrounding areas. And what a great way to get rid of those, that hazardous waste, um, you know, in a good fashion versus, you know, in the ditch. You know, out back on some farm or whatever. Um, and so that it can be done um. Cleanly. So I heard uh, someone got in there right at the beginning and then as they were pulling out, the line was. Way down the road around Fred Meyers and some crazy lineup for that. So. Uh, maybe we need to have it a little more often than once every, I think the last time I remember it was three or four years ago. So. And I know it's a metro thing. It's not necessarily us, but maybe we can encourage them as we support the area. So thanks uh to whoever kind of spurred them on from Metro or.
I think it was DEQ.
Or maybe it was DEQ. I see, I don't, yeah, but I think it maybe need to happen a little. More often as the area um that we service is a pretty large area and, you know, we want to make sure that people dispose of that stuff. And we may, we make it easy to do. It's um like they did Saturday. It, it makes it a lot easier for people to do the right thing and do that. So. Uh, speaking of the forest fires and trees, um, it is a concern of mine as well. Um, having to think about a huge data center that I support and the trees around it and then watching what happened in Detroit Lake. Um, around some of their infrastructure um in that, whether it's uh fire stations, whether it's um. Data centers, whether it's telecom, whether it's city hall, whether it's those and, you know, our trees are beautiful. We love them. But when a forest fire is coming through, it can get a little scary about what's right there as it catches fire and then causes the um. The building. So it would be nice to maybe uh in our planning of our facilities, whether it's wastewater down there or um. Um, or is even there, um, we get our water up uh closer. On the other side of town, you know, what that looks like, um, as Jan pointed out, you know. Um, I didn't even think about it from, you know, the Portland water area where we do get water or even our own, how. If it had gone through there, it would have been pretty devastating uh for everyone that lives in our town. And then uh, this Wednesday, we'll have our Economic Development Committee meeting. Um, and so look forward to that. But that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, quick report for me. Um, thank you to Counselor Exner and staff for working to put together the tour for Representative Anna Williams on the sixteenth. It's, I think, um, we're having to just to get on um our activities um and and how we're utilizing the five hundred thousand from the state will be very helpful. So. Thank you for that. A reminder that the Sandy Chamber is doing the trick-or-treat trail. I know we've talked a lot about the chamber persevering through a pretty difficult year. And we know how hard it is to put on events uh in the, in the state right now. So thank you. Um, to them for uh, for pushing forward on, on that. Um, and then uh, um, finally, just I know counselors uh through this final stretch of the election season, we've been getting hit from. Members of outsider community and insider community from uh both sides of the aisle. I just wanted to uh, you know, reiterate my position and and thank staff for their work. I think it's important. Uh, as we go down the final stretch here, uh, to look out for the freedoms and the freedom of speech and the freedom to express yourselves. No matter what side of the political aisle. and the freedom to express yourselves, no matter what side of the political aisle you happen to be on. You know, we're all American citizens and we all have the right to disagree and to express our viewpoints in whatever way we see fit. As long as we're not intruding on the safety of other individuals. And so that's what I've been seeing here in our community. And I just, a reminder to both sides that everybody shares these exact same freedoms. It's what makes our, our nation so great. And quite honestly, it shouldn't be hard to call out extremism, whether it be the extreme left or the extreme right. And, and extremism that I don't think has any place in our community on either side. So with that, thank you, everybody, for your quick meeting. We're two minutes over Jan's timeline that she provided us of eight PM tonight. So good meeting, everybody. Thank you for your brevity. And with that, I will close our city council meeting.